officially call the meeting to order at 7:10 PM. And we'll start with introductions from our Student Voice in Action Committee Chair Members, and then we'll go to the Board.
Hello, Jim, my name is Josh Patterson, and I hope you guys are all having a good after, whatever, not, evening?
Evening.
Evening? There we go. I could not think of it.
Hi, I'm Saye. I hope you're having a good evening. I'm a junior at Canton High School.
And I'm a sophomore. Come on, Josh, good, it's good.
And I'm Patrick Keough. Thanks for joining us this evening, and I apologize for my delay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lauren Christensen. Welcome.
Patty McCoyn, thanks for coming out tonight on this beautiful evening.
All right, Dr. Merritt.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Superintendent Merritt. I'm looking forward to a wonderful meeting this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here, taking the minutes. And also Ms. Carly Raze, who is standing in to assist us now. She's our Assistant Director of Marketing and Promotion. Ms. Tiskowitz.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kurt Tiskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Good evening. I'm Jill Minnick. I'm Chief Financial and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here.
We're all saying good evening now. Good evening. I'm Abdul Matt Yunor, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Engagement. And I've noticed there are a lot of Isbister Bees in the audience, so it's good to see you.
All right, Saye, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is adoption of agenda, approval of consent agenda, action item 240358.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda. It's action item 240358.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Dr. Merritt, can you walk us through?
Thank you, President Wilson. This night, this evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we are busy hiring champions for our students, as well as the consideration of leaves, resignations, and retirements. We also have the approval from the minutes from our regular meeting, that was on February 27th, 2024, and the following first reading of policies. 3131, that's the Reduction in Certified Staff. 9140, Citizens Advisory Committees. 9140.01, Facilities Utilization and Boundary Study. And then the final reading of the following bylaws and policies. Bylaw 0122, Board Powers. Policy 1420, School Administrator Evaluation. Policy 3120, Employment of Personnel. Policy 3139, Staff Discipline. Policy 3140, Termination and Resignation. Policy 3220, Professional Staff Evaluation. And finally, Policy 3244, that is the Individualized Development Plan.
All right, is there any board member who would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any, anyone against it, say no. All right, it passes five, one, four, four, four zero. We're running thin tonight. All right, I will turn it over to Mr. Maiden.
So we have, I would first like to introduce our new hire, Ashley Campbell here. So yes, Ashley, Ashley Campbell is going to be a teacher at Allen Early Learning Academy, and welcome to Plymouth Canton School.
Thank you.
So I also would like to recognize that we have one of our teachers who was retiring, Anne Marie Kanye. She's, she's been working at the district since 1999. Is she here? I would just like to thank her for her service to the district and welcome, wish her well in her future endeavors. And we have one teacher that is receiving her tenure status today. That's Holly Dede. I would like to read what the principal had to say about her. She said Holly Dede is a dynamic educator who passionately serves the students and families of Holstein Elementary School. She continually goes above and beyond to meet the needs of students. In addition, she is flexible, kind, team player, and a trusted colleague. Holly is an asset to the Plymouth Canton Community School District. So I would like to congratulate her for receiving tenure.
Good, all right. On to celebrating success, which will be led by Member Christensen.
So it's my honor to be presenting or celebrating success this evening. So this evening, the Board of Education will once again celebrate our school community with a VIP award for each of our amazing and dedicated PTO committee volunteers from Isbister Elementary School. Erica Hudson, the PTO President, is so creative and is always coming up with events and activities to bring the community together and support Isbister. Erica is always helping and encouraging others to help and genuinely cares about what is best for the students, staff, and families at Isbister. Amy Boyer, the PTO Vice President, is always encouraging other families to get involved and looking for opportunities to hold family events at Isbister. Amy advocates for all families and looks for ways that they can fundraise to bring free family events, such as trunk or treat, a fan favorite, to the school. Juden Flanagan, the PTO Treasurer, keeps track of the finances and advocates for equity across Isbister's school programs and events. Juden also does a great job finding fundraising opportunities for the school community. Megan Vickers, the PTO Volunteer Coordinator, coordinator, excuse me, is eager to get families involved in the school community in whatever way possible. Megan leads the Isbister Milers Walking and Running Club at school lunch recess and makes sure there are enough volunteers for the school programs. There's more. Carrie Hyman, the PTO Volunteer Coordinator, and my good friend since I was 12 years old, by the way, she's just not here this evening, looks for ways for families in the community to partner together. Carrie advocates for the students and families and makes sure that they can bring programs to the amazing Isbister Bees that will help them thrive at school. Jessica McGrath, the PTO Secretary, has worked hard to keep all families involved at Isbister since she became a part of the school's community. Jessica is thoughtful and is constantly looking for ways the school can improve events and opportunities for families. Jessica volunteers her time and encourages families to get involved and volunteer to better the community. At this time, I would like to invite Emily Hawthorne, the Principal at Isbister Elementary School, to say a few words about this hardworking and talented group of people.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize our PTO Board in such a tremendous way. Our Board works tirelessly and joyfully to celebrate everyone else all year long, so to be able to recognize them in this way is really special. I thought you guys were going to come up with me. Are they coming up in a minute? So when I thought about all the things to share that makes our PTO Board so special, a common theme of community kept coming up, and they truly put the community in community schools. Through every decision they make, through opportunities to partner with our local community, bring them into our school, for opportunities for us to support our local community, and they are constantly fundraising and looking for fun, engaging ways for us to be together because we are the Isbister Bees. In partnerships with our district NHS and NJHS, they provide opportunities for students to earn volunteer hours while removing barriers for families by providing childcare, so they, families can attend PTO meetings, and also having our students volunteer at events so that our Isbister Bees get to be with our middle school and high school leaders in really fun capacities, and it allows our families to be together at events instead of volunteering at them, which is what it's all about. I could go on and on and on, but I just, I want to say thank you so much. There's not enough words, and we have a few teachers here, Marsha Fissler, Lynda Norian, and Laura Regal, and support. And on behalf of our whole staff, thank you for everything that you do for our school community.
So on behalf of the Board of Education, I present Isbister's PTO Volunteer Committee with a Volunteer in Public Schools VIP Award for dedicating their personal time, talents, and efforts to Plymouth Canton Community Schools. I have some awards, so I'd like everybody to come up here and grab them. Would anyone like to say anything? No. So this is Carrie. I'll take Kerry's. You can take Kerry's, okay? We have Jessica McGrath. Congratulations, thank you. Megan Vickers. Here you go. Not as quick at this. Juden Flanagan. Here you go. You're welcome. Two more here. Okay. Maybe. Okay. Amy Boyer. And next, but not recently, this is yours, Erica Hudson.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Yeah.
All right, congratulations again. On to the President's Report, just one item, as my understanding that we had a few board members attend the robotics competition. I don't know if any, Patrick, were you there?
I was there.
Great. Do you mind sharing a recap?
Sure. So I was there along with Board Member Sudhu and Board Member Westra, I believe, and Board Member Carr. So all four of us were there. We saw the rollout of the new competition and the new robots for this year, and they're just, although the presentation and the rollout of the robots was exciting, the session that we had before that with each team, where each team talked about the work that they do and how they organize that work, how they support the process and the program, I would hire any one of these kids. They are amazing, and they're wise beyond their years in this process. They were so polished, they were so professional, they were so together in the work that they were doing, and some of them were freshmen and sophomores in that process. Just outstanding program, outstanding kids, great collaboration across the process, you know, really supporting each other. It's just a fantastic program, and I wish the team really well this year in their competitions. They've done well in the past, and I think they're poised to do well again this season.
Fantastic. Thank you for representing the Board at that event. Definitely appreciate it.
We had many of us that were there, but.
Yes, absolutely. It sounded like you had a quorum at that event.
We had a quorum, but we, actually, I didn't even know Member Sudhu was there, so we didn't have any problems, and we were there supporting a school function.
Absolutely. Just joking, just joking. All right, on to SPA, and obviously, Member Sudhu is not here.
Member Westra is also our other SPA committee member, but I'm happy to do a quick update, if you'd like. So we met on March 6th, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, we had a shortened SPA meeting because the teams were attending some academy nights, and so we covered the elementary ELA curriculum. So you'll remember earlier, we did UFLY, which was the early literacy K-2 primary piece. So we reviewed the elementary ELA curriculum to complement that side of the, the other side of the coin around reading and writing. We will be bringing that forward in the next Board meeting, so more information to come with that. And then we also did review one out-of-country field trip, which we'll also be looking at at the next Board meeting. So thank you. Our next meeting is Wednesday, April 3rd, at 5:00 PM, right here.
Thank you very much. Policy Committee with Member McCoyn.
So we met tonight because there's only the one meeting this month. So we got through several things that were on our agenda from before. We talked about, we had been discussing committee structure and trying to tighten it up a bit so that people have a better understanding of what they're getting into when they volunteer for something. And so our legal counsel has been working with us on some of those things. And then we've also discussed some things that had to do with teaching and learning, so Miss Rail came to, because they've also been discussing those in SPA. And most of those things will be coming back to our committee. We had some questions answered, we had some cleanup of language. One of the things where there is being discussed is alternative high school, because we've had a lot of interest in the community, because the staff at Starkweather has been so great that there's more interest in children wanting to attend there, so they're working on that. So our next meeting is April 23rd, 2024, 5:30, Collaboration Space, which is all the way to the end of this floor.
Thank you, Member McCoyn. On to FNO with Trustee Keough.
Thank you.
Trustee Keough.
We had our last FNO meeting on Thursday, March 7th, and we reviewed a few items that are, I'm sorry, we reviewed a few items that are on the agenda this evening, including the tennis courts bid replacement, or the tennis courts replacement bid award, as well as the annual budget survey responses. We also reviewed a draft of the ADA Audit Report. The district is doing an audit of all of our facilities from an ADA perspective, and using that information to both match current law, but also best practices around ADA. And we saw the first school that they'd completed the data gathering process in the initial audit, that was for Starkweather. And what we, one of the things that we recommended coming out of there is to engage with our stakeholders in the ADA community to make sure that we're providing these things with the right focus and lens as part of that process, as we continue to do the other work at the high school level, and then to bring those presentations back forward to the full Board so we can see what's happening as part of that process. We have been updating our schools for ADA issues as we do our bond projects and other activities, but we're also taking a focused effort on ADA and accessibility with a lens towards equity in the work that we do across the district. Our next FNO meeting is, sorry, it is Thursday, April 4th, here in this room, and at 5:00 PM, and we welcome the community to attend.
Fantastic, thank you. Student Voice in Action with Ms. Saye and Mr. Josh.
So Student Voice in Action has not met since our last meeting in February, I believe, but our upcoming meeting will be on Monday, March 18th, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Can you say where it is?
Oh, yeah. It's at Canton High School in the Media Center.
All right, fantastic. On to the Superintendent's Report with Dr. Merritt.
Thank you, President Wilson. The last time we were together, we were patiently awaiting the results of our operating millage renewal that was on the ballot, February the 27th, and so I am so pleased this evening to share and offer my sincere thank you to our entire school community for their overwhelming support of our operating millage, to the tune of 71% of our voters in our local area were in support of this millage. And of course, as we've talked about, yes, our renewal again is now securing funding for our district for the next, district for the next 20 years, so it allows us to have some financial stability, some clarity. We continued to talk as we were leading up to that millage of the importance of this in terms of the funding and what would not have been made up from the state had we not been successful in moving forward. And so kind of just think about that lens of 16% of our operating funds, that's $33.5 million each year, that now we have secured moving forward for the next 20 years. So again, we pledge, as always, to continue to be great stewards of our taxpayers' money and to ensure that we are supporting our programming needs for our students so that we can continue to deliver a world-class education, which our family and community has come to expect and absolutely our students deserve. I see ya.
I just wanted to mention that this is for the non-homestead properties, so this is not a part of your normal property tax as a homestead owner. Those houses are exempt. This is for the commercial and non-primary residence properties in the community, and it is a super important part of our funding process because the state assumes that we're going to levy those 18 mils, and if we don't, they take the money away from us. So having this, this overwhelming support from the community and having this done for 20 years really sets us in a great position to not have to do this almost perfunctory process that's necessary for us to do. So I want to thank the administration for all the work and providing factual details around this process and encouraging people to vote.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, moving on. I always take an opportunity to brag about our amazing students and our amazing staff and the programs that we offer. An opportunity to really highlight that will be taking place on March the 20th. That's our PCEP Athletics and Activities Extravaganza. So we always talk about our educational program, but the extension of that is really in looking with that whole child in mind and how we provide opportunities through our athletics and our extracurricular at our high school campus that allow really our students to explore our school buildings and our facilities. That is March the 20th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, this extravaganza. We want to invite our community to come out to learn more about our exciting options for our students. It's also an option for students to tour the building. I will say, as a former parent, we all go into that park campus a little bit nervous, and we think it's so big, and so having opportunities for our students, there's so many things, clubs, over 100 clubs for our students to be involved in, so we really have an opportunity to make large feel small. So again, welcoming, welcoming our community out to the extravaganza on March the 20th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at our PCEP campus. You heard me earlier brag about Salem student Madison Morrison being named Miss Basketball. She is now a finalist. I'd like to give you an update and congratulate her from all of our PCCS community. Let's first clap her up. Madison, as you know, is a shooting guard of the Salem High School Girls' Basketball Team. She was recently named a finalist for this year's Mick McCabe Miss Basketball Award. This honor, which is presented and voted on by members of the Basketball Coaches Association of Michigan, recognizes the best high school girls' player in the state each year. Her resume is quite impressive. She passed the 1,000-point threshold earlier this season and will finish her career with over 1,500 points and 500 rebounds. Morrison, who will play collegiately at Central Michigan, has the chance to join an elite company by becoming just the second rock to win this award. She would stand alongside Deita Head, who is widely regarded as one of the best girls' basketball players to play in Michigan during the 1980s. So again, we are congratulating Ms. Morrison on this accomplishment, and she will have her award presented at the Girls' Basketball Finals in East Lansing on March the 23rd. We also want to give a shout out to discovery teacher, Ms. Brenda Johnson, who was just recently named Teacher of the Month by State Representative Rajiv Peri. She received this award for her commitment to the well-being and academic success of her students. She was recognized for creating an environment where every child feels valued and supported. And when I say every child, I mean every child without exception. She's known always for going above and beyond, often staying after school to provide extra help and implementing creative teaching methods to cater to different learning styles. In receiving this award, Ms. Johnson continues our district's tradition of seeing our amazing teachers recognized for their outstanding work and service to students. If you don't know Ms. Johnson, take an opportunity to meet her. She is truly a legacy and a legend and an advocate for all students. We heard earlier about Lightning Robotics. We want to congratulate the award-winning PCEP Lightning Robotics team after they unveiled the latest in a long line of robots capable of placing the group among the best competition teams in the world. This was last week, and again, we thank our board members that were able to share and support our students in the unveiling of Rhapsody. That's the new robot this year. It's got its name as a nod to the Crescendo's Game Challenge. That's this year's theme. This team this year, as we heard, comprises over 150 student members who learned robotic skills from our adult mentors, so we want to wish them luck as they begin their competition season this month. And you already heard just the accolades of that evening. Our students are so impressive. You would go up to certain sections or areas, and they said, what would you like to know? And I had to say, what would you like to share with me? Because I don't even know the, I don't even speak the language that you're speaking right now. They are absolutely so impressive. And I think what I was so impressed with is I said, how much information or prior knowledge did you bring into this course? And so many said, I didn't know anything when I came into this course. So a shout out to Mr. Obznik and our entire staff and our mentors, who are really helping to nurture and provide environments in which students can thrive and learn so much. So proud of them. We have some more awards and accolades to share at PCEP. Our Science Olympiad wins medals at competition, and there are so many accolades for our PCEP Science Olympiad team. At their most recent competition, that was about two weeks ago, Canton came in second place, Salem came in third place, and Plymouth came in fifth place overall in our region. Canton and Salem teams will be advancing to the state competition in May, and a small group of Plymouth's team members were also invited to compete at the state level based on their individual accomplishments in these events. I had a couple of names to just share. Jada Choudry and Viar Schroff took second place in chemistry. Shodri also took place in optics with her partner, Kevin Han. In addition, we have five students from our PCEP teams that earned over $1,000 in scholarships to Wayne State for placing first in their events. That's Andrew Poe at Plymouth, Ajant Twari at Salem, Kevin Han at Salem, Alak Swarvithian at Canton, and Asha, I'm sorry, Akshay Honda at Canton. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Jenny Banach and the other PCEP coaches that really support and provide an environment for our students in Science Olympiad to succeed. And again, congratulations to all of our members of the team. As a wrapping up this evening, my report, reminder that we are celebrating March is Reading Month. I want to thank Ms. Hirsch's second-grade classroom at Isbister. The bees are gone, but well, I'll make sure that we just give them a shout out. I had an opportunity to read the Frog Principle to them as we celebrated, celebrated the importance of reading with our young learners. And I just want to again thank our amazing teachers throughout the district for the outstanding activities that they are providing for our young people to continue to keep them excited about reading. If you have an opportunity and are interested, any board members, we welcome you into our buildings, just let us know, and we can have you reading with our young people. And when I tell you, after you finish reading a book, they have questions and questions and questions for days, so it is definitely a joyful experience. Finally, the VA, that is our Virtual Academy, enrollment is now open. We want to remind our community that we continue to hold our Virtual Academy for some students who prefer to learn more in a virtual setting and not the traditional in-building setting. We are proud every single day to allow our students these different opportunities to learn and to thrive. The enrollment deadline is April the 5th. More information on our Virtual Academy is available at the PCCS website. That is PCCSK12.com. And that concludes my report this evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Merritt. On to Teaching and Learning with Ms. Rail. First up, action item 240359, consider approval of resolution for new course materials for Other Worlds of Science Fiction and Fantasy. As a reminder, this is the final reading. Is there a?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for new course materials for Other Worlds of Science Fiction and Fantasy. Final reading, this is action item number 24-03-59.
I'll second.
All right, Member McCoyn, second. Any further discussion and/or questions? All right, all in favor, say yes. Any again, say nope. All right, passes four zero. All right, Ms. Rail, you're up with the Presentation, Elementary Program Highlights.
Yep, and I'd like to welcome Dr. Denise Lilly, our Executive Director of Elementary Education, to the podium, and she and I will co-present on this. So I'm going to leave my seat and sneak over behind Denise as well, so.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here this evening to highlight the wonderful things that are taking place at the elementary level throughout Plymouth Canton Community So just a reminder, for the purpose of our presentation for this evening, we're going to share highlights of all of our programs, all of the buildings here in Plymouth Canton School, all of our schools, the Virtual Academy as well. We're going to also, when we talk about the high-level work that we're doing, we're going to focus on the sense of belonging, student engagement, as well as culture and climate. And lastly, we're going to provide an update around the K-5 innovation, excuse me, K-5 innovation period and its connection to the Student Engagement and Innovation Dynamic Plan goals. So just as a reminder, when we talk about our Dynamic Plan goals, what we want to make sure that we lift and highlight is that all of the goals are interconnected, and so when we're focusing on academic achievement and closing achievement gaps for all students, it is very important to remember that sense of belonging, student engagement, as well it is very important to remember that sense of belonging, student engagement, and culture and climate are interwoven within all of these goals. So what you will see here for the next two slides are just a few highlights, we had to condense it for the purposes of time, around sense of belonging and culture and climate, as well as student engagement in our schools. So a high-level discussion, you will see a few different photos. The one I'm going to point to at the beginning is around, "You belong here and the future of the world is in our classroom." And these are, this is information that when we talk about using data that is informed through whether it's panorama survey data and other data points that we have, what we have found, we want to continue to hone in on making sure that every student, when they walk into our doors, they know that they belong at school. They know that they belong in our buildings. Again, we recognize and understand that the future of the world is in our classroom, and how do we celebrate that on a daily basis? So in many of our schools, we have our ambassadors program, and what that entails is that we have students who are considered veterans of the school. And when they come, when we have new students and families that come to our buildings, they are paired with an ambassador who's a veteran. And so students don't feel like they're by themselves. As you all might remember, it can be very lonely when you're first coming into a new environment and you don't necessarily know anyone. So having the students who've been in the school for quite some time, having them have the opportunity to connect with someone who is brand-new and being able to just learn that environment. You'll see a couple of pictures at the top where we have our, we call it, again, peers and/or buddies program. And so often what that looks like is we will have our kindergarten students paired with fourth to fifth grade students, as well as our first grade students. And I don't know about you, but when I have the opportunity to visit those classrooms and students are able to say, "This is my friend," and he or she is in fourth grade, "and they're my buddy, and we're playing outside," and all the different things that they're doing, it truly again cultivates that nurturing environment that we're all achieving and striving for in our buildings. Again, our Student of the Month programs that you will see throughout many of our programs and throughout many of our schools on the next slide, you will see that many of our students are highlighted, and it's not always connected to academic achievement. We want to make sure that we're highlighting not only academic achievement, but there may be students who have goals around social-emotional learning, there may be other goals that they're trying to focus on. And so students each month in many of our buildings are nominated for a variety of different things. You'll see that bottom-left picture where we have a book vending machine in one of our schools. And so each month, the students who receive the Student of the Month Award receive a token, and they can then go to that book vending machine and get a new book. And of course, we always want to make sure that we have representation in the books that we have. And lastly, I'm going to highlight two more things. When we talk about community, many of our schools are focused on giving back. And so you'll see one of our buildings where they did a sock drive at the beginning of the year. We also have some schools that do mitten drives because again, students recognize that there are families, there are other individuals in our community that may need something. And so when we can give and help students understand the purpose of giving and giving back, that makes us all better in the end. And the last thing I would like to highlight, you'll see there are some young ladies that are dressed as Dorothy in The Wizard of Oz. Most recently, we had an opportunity to have a performing arts program in one of our schools. And when we talk about again inclusivity and what that means, you will see there were a third of the school that had an opportunity to participate in this play in one facet or another. And so being able to diligently make sure that students feel a part of the culture, making sure that students understand that they are supposed to be there is what we continue to strive for every single day.
And as we also focus on sense of belonging and engagement, I want to do, we want to do an update on the Innovation Period. So you'll remember last year, we launched a K5 Innovation Period. So that was our first iteration of a period that directly collaborated and supported the PCCS learner profile. So I'm just going to reset and ask you to relook at the learner profile progressions. Collaborator, ethical and global citizen, critical thinker, goal-directed and resilient, communicator and innovator. As we launched the fifth special, we were looking at direct correlations with those and especially looking at our panorama data around grit, perseverance, growth mindset, and again, back to our Dynamic Plan Goal around innovation. So we didn't have the opportunity yet, so we wanted to take the opportunity to share with you some of the data from the first year of implementation. We launched a parent and staff survey. So you'll see 234 response, folks responded to that survey. Eighty-two percent were parents, and then 17.9% were staff members. Asked to rate their overall quality of the elementary Innovation Period at the end of last year, you'll see the ratings here, from left, the low rating, to the highest rating of a five. Love the addition and look forward to it next year, which would be the year we're in. Do you believe the Innovation Period is extremely relevant for students? Not relevant, or somewhere in between? You'll notice that the majority of folks indicated that it's either extremely or somewhat relevant for our students. Does your student have a positive experience and enjoy the new Innovation Period? You'll see the data here in this slide as well. And this slide is like an eye chart, but you know, it's in the board packet, so folks can read it later. But these are some verbatim comments from either emails that we have received, the staff members, or directly from the verbatim pieces of the survey that was sent. So you'll see there's a lot of common threads around helping our students prepare for their futures. I'm going to take you into and show you a peek into what the teachers see as part of the planning around this, because we're very intentional about the implementation and direct correlation to the learner profile. You'll see in here some examples of lessons, but more importantly, you're going to see examples of student work. Also want to note that we embed inclusive literature throughout this program as well, as well as looking at varied individuals who have excelled in the, in areas as engineers, as designers, as innovators, as creators, as scientists, and so that all of our young people can see themselves in different roles. This is also an area that we designed so that students have the ability to fail forward safely. As we look at the Innovation Period, the first year when we launched it, we did two grade bands, K2 and 35. I'm going to take you back in time and remember that we did that because we wanted to build this foundational structure across the district. The shift this year moved K2 to first grade, 35 to third grade, and we built out the rest of the curriculum so that it scaffolds from kindergarten all the way through fourth and fifth grade. And as students matriculate or move through the program, it becomes more difficult, more challenging, but again, it's supportive risk-taking. One of the big reflection pieces that was shared by teachers was a little bit of a surprise for them in the fact that as early as kindergarten, our students were saying things like, "I can't do that." And they would try to give up. So we really worked hard and diligently on continuing. "You can do it, you just haven't done it yet. Let's really work on that." So as we see all of the different things, as we work through here, you're going to see several examples of students and student work. On the lesson on the right-hand side is about building a pumpkin stand to sell pumpkins. And you'll notice that students do this in various ways. There are very rarely one right answer for anything. So one of the things we encourage students to do is look at different ways to answer complex and novel problems. I can stand up here all day and talk about Innovation Period. I'm not the most important person to talk about the Innovation Period. So if you'll bear with us, we're going to show you about a two-and-a-half-minute video with the people who are most important in here. So you're going to hear from our teachers and our students. So Carly, will you key up the video for us?
At Plymouth Canton Community Schools, our Dynamic Plan is designed to give the students of today the skills they need for the job market of the future. As the world changes, we're proud to innovate and help students stay at the forefront of learning opportunities. Now let's take a look at the new and innovative things happening right here in PCCS classrooms as we prepare tomorrow's leaders.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Ms. Presland. Welcome to the Innovation Period at PCCS.
I am Mrs. Sauerbeck, and I am an innovator.
Hi, I'm Erica Johnson, and I teach innovation here at PCCS.
Innovation has been great so far. The kids have been really excited about it. You know, there's a lot of hands-on, a lot of things that maybe they haven't heard before, so they're getting really excited. We're talking about, you know, different careers or just different things that you can use, this whole innovation process or the engineering design process.
I feel like it's like a really great special. I feel like it's a really fun special. Also, it like lets us connect with other people.
Elementary kids definitely need hands-on. They are always wanting to move their bodies, move around, explore things, discover things, take things apart, put things together. And so when they're doing that, they're learning. And so innovation is awesome for that.
I mostly like building stuff and like creating those people.
The engineering design process is huge in life. It's the process of ask, imagine, plan, create, improve. And you can use it with anything, whether you're inventing something, whether you just have a problem in life. It teaches empathy with people, getting to know people, their needs, their wants. And then, you know, once you know that, how can you help them? And that can be like any, any career that they have in life that's going to help them with.
Helping students become innovators is one of the skills and characteristics outlined in the PCCS learner profile.
Just a solid base of, you know, let's, let's learn this process and, you know, learn a problem-solving process and not giving up. We talk a lot about improving and not giving up, and that's okay, and that's how we learn. Like, okay, it didn't work. So which part did, which part didn't? What can we, you know, fix? What can we work on? So they're kind of giving that, getting that grit and just that growth mindset that, you know what? You don't know it, and it's okay, because that's how we learn.
We are innovators!
At PCCS, we are innovators. Thanks for joining us as we explore the exciting things happening here at Plymouth Canton Community Schools. You can learn more about innovative opportunities created by the PCCS Dynamic Plan and learner profile by visiting PCCSK12.com and our social media channels.
The cardboard arcade that you saw, there's a cardboard challenge that we do with our young people. They work in groups of three to four, and their challenge is to design an arcade game that other people want to play. So, and then we have folks from different classes come in and play the games. If you'll flip back to the slide deck for me, please. As we look at next steps, continuously what we plan to do is review this. Every year and throughout the year, teachers are reflecting on what we're doing, as well as the students, we're getting reflections back from students. What's working? What should we do differently? What can we do better? And then we're also building out a more, a very intentional pathway through middle school and high school, connected to STEM, but not just connected to STEM, also connecting to the learner profile progressions as we build those out. There's another exciting addition that I'll talk about in just a minute, but I also want to say that two teachers and I will be traveling to Washington DC the first Saturday of spring break, because we're going to be presenting about our Innovation Period at a national conference called the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, ASCD, one of the largest conferences in the nation. So we're excited that we've been invited to do that. And a really big next step for us with this program, I'm going to introduce you to Joe Amable, who is our K12 Curriculum Coordinator for Math and Innovation, so that he is taking on the mantle of also helping the teachers design, collaborate, and expand this program as we look forward. So I just want to say, let Joe come up and introduce himself to you, because you'll see him many times.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Good evening, I'm Joe Amable. I don't really have a huge speaking role tonight in the presentation, but I just want to say I'm thrilled and honored to be here, and I'm excited for the future of innovation. So thank you for having me, appreciate it.
And with that, we'll open it up for any questions that you have for us.
All right, we'll start with number Kehoe.
So first of all, I love this program. I love this work. The video is fantastic. I think it should be included in our marketing plan as for the innovation work that we're doing. I have a curiosity question on the Lesson Two under Kindergarten, Growth Mindset. It says, "Students will use the EDP to create .art."
Yep, the Engineering Design Process. You heard the teachers refer to that, and this is a teacher-facing document?
No, I understood, I understood most of the other acronyms that we're here, and I know it is a teacher-facing one. I just couldn't, racking my head as to what EDP was. So thank you.
And it's fun to listen to our students sing engineering songs and stuff, so there's some, I encourage you to come and see it when you can.
I will look forward to doing that.
Perfect.
I have no questions. I, my, just more, you know, anecdotal stories. My kids are in elementary school, so they're both in, have their innovation special at Smith Elementary, and they love it. They think it's really wonderful. You know, that's one of the specials that they talk about quite a bit when they come home. So I'm, I'm excited to see how that program has grown and to see how that continues. And I also, you know, expect, and I hear from my kids that, you know, those same innovative practices are happening in their general classrooms too every day. But I love that there's this special focus on that. So thank you so much for this highlight.
I don't have any really questions. I had the same question about the EDP that Patrick asked at first, so that was great. My, the anecdotal information I've gotten on Innovation Period is that the kids love it, so that's great. This whole thing was, was really good. I liked the, the vending machine for the books. That just seems, sorry, a really big, like, how exciting, like you can go there and you put your token in and you pick the book you want. Like, it just seems more fun than just going to a table and picking one up. But these were great. All of these pictures were great. Maybe we can have some more videos. Like, I'd like to see this play that we have five Dorthees for.
The hardest thing for us is this could have been a hundred, hundred, hundred-slide deck, because we have so many amazing pictures of our young people, and they're just so incredible and so excited and so exciting to work with.
That was a great play. We had five Dorthees, five scarecrows, five different versions of Tornado. So many kids had opportunity to participate, so they're switching sets constantly. Totos, five totos.
But thank you for all this hard work.
Mr. Josh?
Just one comment or like suggestion maybe is, it seems like it's around innovation, like STEM principles, so maybe working to get like a high school collaboration from like the engineering and other STEM pathways into the elementary thing.
So using the high school students as mentors?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, that's a great idea.
I have no questions, but I really enjoyed the video in particular. And I also remember doing the cardboard challenge when I went into elementary school, so I really liked that.
The buddy program, I remember that especially, that was amazing.
Fantastic. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I would be remiss, though, if I didn't also thank the Bosch Corporation, because they provided some grant funding to help support some additional materials for the program. And they've also sent folks to, to visit us, and we're having some conversations about hopefully bringing some of their employees in with our students as well to help see a career pathway. So thank you.
Shout out to the Bosch Corporation.
John is over there in the corner with that amazing voice.
I was, I was thinking that was John.
John, that's him.
That was awesome. He has his radio voice on.
Love it. All right, next is Finance and Operations with Ms. Minnick.
Thank you, President Wilson. For the board's consideration this evening, we have the first reading for approval to award bids for the PCUP Tennis Court Replacement. This is bid package number PCUP-2. As an overview for this evening, the tennis courts at PCUP were originally built in 2002. Over the years, we have performed several repairs, most recently in 2016 and 2019. And in fact, last year, it was brought to our attention by administrators there that expressed safety concerns over the current conditions of the courts. So the courts were assessed, and it was determined that the tennis courts required a complete replacement. The project's scope is to replace the asphalt courts with post-tensioned concrete. This is a very durable material. And the new courts will also include new coaching alleys, a full replacement of all fencing, and updated stormwater retention, detention, excuse me. On February 28th, bids were opened that included 17 bids from vendors across four bid divisions. And in your packets this evening is an award recommendation letter from McCarthy &amp; Smith, our construction management group, bid tabulations, bid summary, and a budget summary resulting from those bids received. This item was presented to the Finance and Operations Committee on March 7th, and it is recommended that we move forward with total contracts to award for bid package PCUP-2 in the amount of $3,188,150, and this will be paid from the 2020 and 2023 bond funds. So with us this evening, we have Brian Gussman with McCarthy &amp; Smith, and he is here to share some more details and some drawings for you as well.
Thank you very much. You covered the gamut, a lot of what I'm going to present here today. So thank you for the introduction. And with me also is Derek Dinkley with TMP Architecture. So as Ms. Minnick mentioned, this is regarding the tennis court replacement. So those maybe not familiar with the park, as we call it, that is used by all three high schools, Salem High School, Canton High School, and Plymouth High School. We reviewed the overall project overview, so it's basically 100% new, full demolition and removal of the existing fence, tennis courts, and sidewalks, installation of new 24, 24 new courts with this post-tensioned concrete system, which we'll talk about a little bit further as the presentation progresses, inclusive of two new coaches' alleys, we're going to mention on that. going to mention on that when we get to some of the graphics, as well as a new underground stormwater detention system, which is somewhat of a buzzword as we continue on through the course of the bond as it pertains to Wayne County. As we experience with all these storms, these hundred-year storms that now seem to happen every 10 years, Wayne County's up the ante when it comes to managing that stormwater process, so we'll talk through that process a little bit as part of this project. This is a draft as part of the future, what the, the future campus site plan could look like, and I would highlight towards the top left of that sheet, you'll see those, those courts. It's three banks of courts, or really what will be six banks of courts that's located just west of Salem High School, but again, is used by, by all high schools on campus. This is the current layout of the tennis courts. When we mention coaches' alley, I'm going to say the center bank of courts, you'll see there's a sidewalk that separates the two. Not only from coaches' perspective, from a physical education perspective, it becomes conducive to continue to be able to watch and, and comment and coach students on both sides, whereas the existing layout, as you see on the other outside left and right side bank of courts, the sidewalks all on the north side, which was something that came way of the discussions with the end-users, that boy, this is really difficult when it comes to, you know, coaching, or whether that be viewing, it becomes difficult to have that connectivity with all the courts at the same time. So this is the proposed court layout. So what you'll see, pretty almost identical layout, same amount of courts, that center bank of courts, the top and bottom, almost identical to where they were previously located. But you'll see on the left and the right hand, or the east and west sides, there is that sliver of sidewalk that's now placed there, so we call those coaches' alleys. So really to mimic what was going on in the middle of those courts, we've extended that sidewalk a little bit, just to prevent, to allow a little bit more access, especially when it comes to supervision during the, the tennis season or whatever be the case. One other thing, we talked about, we talked about post-tensioned concrete, but we talked about underground stormwater detention. So in this particular case, not necessarily represented in this pictorial here, but on southeast corner, which is the bottom right of this page, the underground detention will be located directly underneath the courts, as when you saw in that overall view, not a whole lot of room to work with. There's a lot of drainage ditches, and, and as we've experienced over the last 20 years, certainly, a lot of water occurs underneath these areas, which we got to do something with that water, and that's by way of underground detention, as well as this post-tensioned concrete system that we've, we've kind of mentioned. So it's, it's important to note where we started and where we're going. The original bond scope was essentially the asphalt replacement itself at the tune of about $720,000. So that was based identified 2018, possibly 2017. Over the course of these last four or five years, the courts have not gotten any better. The fence posts, the fence foundations, with all the water that we've experienced, has only gotten worse. So rather than, you know, put good money after bad, we looked at it holistically, and what is it going to take to, to bring this thing up to snuff and then be something that will stand the test of time from now and in the future? So asphalt replacement is a, is an, I don't want to say an old way of things, they still certainly do plenty of asphalt courts, but something that is becoming now more popular in Michigan certainly, is this post-tensioned concrete system. So actually, in lieu of using asphalt, they use concrete with steel reinforcing inside of the concrete itself. That helps kind of provide this cap, if you will, over top of the existing systems, and lends itself to more of unstable soils that, you know, if there's water and, and things of that nature that surround the property, lend itself more to, to that process. In addition to its structural integrity, it's useful life. So on average, asphalt courts, they, they venture about 20 years useful life. Post-tensioned concrete is about double that, roughly 40 years, they say, give or take. So you get certainly twice the usage out of this post-tensioned concrete, and especially based on the water infiltration that we're seeing right now makes a lot of sense when it comes to replacing these courts. Again, the fencing by way of a lot of that water infiltration need to get replaced, so that was recommended to be removed and replaced, as well as those coaches' alleys that we, we mentioned, and the underground stormwater retention. So we took that as a whole, what does that, what does that mean from a budget perspective? So we looked at a budget of $3.6 million is really what that would take, and we're going to talk about the bids as we received in comparison to that number, but keeping in mind where we started, which was that $720,000 number. This is the bid summary, so as Ms. Minnick stated, we received bids. I've kind of segmented this in a couple different slides, because it becomes kind of a big spreadsheet to receive. So we received proposals, and we recommend award for four different bid categories: earthwork, site utilities, site concrete, fencing, and synthetic surfacing. Of those bids, we received 17 in total, two of which were women-owned, zero of them were minority-owned, four of which were union, nine of which were non-union, and then we had four other affiliations. In our FNO, we've kind of talked about identifying maybe what those other affiliations are. In most cases, they're small business or veteran-owned companies, so moving forward, maybe we represent those individually moving forward. And as you can note, under Bid Division 102, you see Simone Construction Services in parentheses, and it gets a little cramped there, that is, is one of the women-owned companies that is, that was a red low and being recommended for award today. Something maybe worth noting, on March 1st, we did meet with Jason Cole, who's the president of the Michigan Minority Contractors Association of Michigan. That's an entity that we're familiar with. We introduced ourselves and Plymouth Canton Community Schools, probably about a year ago, to, to the exciting work that's going on in Plymouth Canton Community Schools. So we did another presentation as far as what Plymouth Canton Community Schools is, what the bond requirements are, and had some pretty good feedback, so it's, it's certainly an open dialogue with Jason, and we hope to continue to foster that relationship moving forward as, as more projects come out for bid. So this gives us the overall budget summary. Again, to, to put in context, we had an original construction budget of $720,000. As we looked at that project in the whole, and, and that scope grew, we had a revised budget of $3.6 million. The total award recommendation today is $3,188,150, which would give us, in comparison to the revised budget, a positive variance of $411,850. Important to talk about schedule, so what does this mean? It was certainly brought up about a year ago, when, when there were some concerns about how quickly can we do this process, because there's some concerns about the, the condition of the courts as it stands today. So if approved in the, in the next couple of board meetings, we would like to start right away. That would be April of, of this spring, leading into October. So this is not a new conversation with the, the tennis folks and the gymnasium folks. As of right now, they kind of have plans to place elsewhere, on the assumption that this work may, may proceed. But there is one big caveat when I talked about stormwater detention, and that's, that's processing these permits when it comes to stormwater. So that is something that, I can't demo anything of, I can't put it back, and so I, I can't really proceed until those county permits get approved. Sometimes that's a quicker process than not, so we remain optimistic, and that is our Plan A. We do have a Plan B, in which we receive alternative pricing at time of bid to potentially do this work in 2025, if, if that were to be the only option that we have left. That is to the tune of about $200,000 of an increase that the district would have to pay to, to slide that work to the next year. As part of this award recommendation, we are not recommending that cost, with the assumption that we are, we're still planning on moving forward with 2024 work, but ultimately it's, it's a Wayne County item. We are, we're moving forward, as, as we speak, permits are already in, in anticipation to make sure that we're ready to hit the ground running, if in fact, the board elects to, to move forward with this project. But we do put that caveat in there, because that's some of the, we'll control the controllables, that is one of those things that is, is tougher us to control and tougher us to pin down, so we'll continue to, you know, bet our resources on that and, and move forward and try and be expeditious with those permits. With that, that concludes my presentation, and be happy to answer any questions.
So Brian, we'd had a couple conversations on this in, in FNO, and there's a few things I'd like to, to clarify and make sure that we've highlighted here. First is, is those coaches' alleys were wide enough to be accessible to support a wheelchair or anything like that, if we had a coach that was in, in that kind of, if, if they were using a wheelchair as part of the process, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the second question is, if you can go back to the drawings that show the current tennis layout and the, the next one with the proposed tennis court layout, we see a desire path where people are walking from the parking lot to the process. Desire path is where you see a dirt path, where people make their own path as part of the process. And we're, I, we'd, I know we'd had a discussion about this, because there was some concerns about that process, and the safety is related to that curved driveway. And if we go to the next one that shows where we're actually going to build this, I can't remember what we, what we discussed.
So as it stands right now, and I'm going to go back to this one, just because it's a little bit bigger of an aerial, on the east side, the right side of that bank of tennis courts, you can see that sidewalk extend. There is a security gate there to get your bearings as you go back to the Salem loop. That currently, as it stands today, is, is the only ADA access available to those bank of courts. As we went through design, so this is something not quite finalized yet, but the desire is certainly to add more available handicap access to the north of those courts. The trouble that we, the reason why it's not represented here, originally, it was a little bit closer to that curved loop, which becomes a little bit dangerous when it comes to encouraging folks, although there may be some people who are walking there currently, but we want to be cautious on where we're encouraging people to walk, which is kind of a blind corner as, as those folks might drive around. So to answer kind of your question, we are planning on including an additional ADA access ramp between where it currently exists, somewhere closer to the central portion of the, of the courts, but we're trying to pin down where that, that perfect spot is.
Okay, I, I thought I'd remember that, I just didn't see it in the drawing, so I was a little bit confused about that. You know, the other thing I would mention is, is that there was extensive conversations with the stakeholders about doing this in pieces, so that they could still have a partial season, and the feedback was, if I remember correctly, was, "If you can do it all at once and get it done in one year, we'd rather do that and find other places to do the whole year than to have this be spread out across multiple years." And with the stormwater detention issues, there's some substantial concerns with doing a piecemeal process as well. So this is something that's been collaborated with all the stakeholders and the athletics teams and coaches to make sure that this is the right process, and they're very much in favor of this. And also, the post-tensioned concrete could last for as long as 40 or 50 years compared to the, the asphalt. We're not getting any promises around that, but, you know, we're seeing substantially longer times for post-tensioned concrete than asphalt, and the number of vendors for post-tension is much higher than asphalt. Asphalt, especially for tennis courts, has become more of a specialty item, so there, there's not as many suppliers as part of it. So this ends up being only about 20 or 30% more in cost, but nearly double the, the lifespan.
Fantastic. Ms. Ay, any questions?
So I played tennis for most of my life, and I've spent countless hours on those courts, so I think this is a really, like, good and necessary plan. My one concern would be that, I don't know if this is possible, but like, the current plan seems to be interfering with both the girls' and boys' seasons, so like, maybe if we could push it back by one month, like, it would only interfere with one season.
And so that is a great suggestion. Part of the problem with tennis courts and why it's kind of a, I don't want to call it a rush, but why we want to start soon is because that acrylic coating that goes on top. So the, the later we start, the later we finish, and so this acrylic coating, kind of the color that you see on top of that asphalt, that requires a 50-degree and rising temperature. So if all of a sudden, all of a sudden it's October, and in Michigan, you don't know if you're going to get snow, if you're going to get an 80-degree day, that's the challenge with it. It certainly makes a lot of sense to try and minimize the impact, but that's kind of our bigger concern, is that if we don't start soon enough, we may run out of weather, and then we'll be back again in spring, that would in theory roll over to another, you know, season.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Josh?
I have no questions, but thank you for all your hard work.
All right, number McCoyn?
I don't really have any questions. I had a couple, Patrick kind of got to them when he does his additional explanation. I think it's a great idea if this is going to last longer, because then there'll be less disruptions into the future. Thank you.
I'm on the FNO committee, so I've been part of these conversations, so no questions here. Thanks.
All right, anything else? We're good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, we have Action Item 240360, Consider Approval of Resolution Bid Package MS-Dash Two East and West, MS Furniture Purchase, and this is the final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution, Bid Package MS-Dash Two East and West Middle School Furniture Purchase. This is Action 240360, and it's a final reading.
Second.
All right, any further discussion or questions?
Just as a reminder for those watching in here, here in, in the audience and at home, we discuss this extensively, both at FNO and at the last board meeting.
All right, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Passes 4-0. Another action item, 240361, Consider Approval of Resolution Bid Package T-A 2020 Bond Project Tech Contracts E-Rate Structured Cabling and Network Infrastructure. This is the final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package T-A 2020 Bond Project Tech Contracts E-Rate Structured Cabling and Network Infrastructure, Action Item 240361, Final Reading.
Second.
All right, any questions?
Just from some context on this, and again, to thank the, the support that we get from the federal government, this is one where we get substantial pricing and, it's not, I don't think it's rebates, but it is funding that supports the cabling that we do as part of the district. So it is definitely something that we take advantage of, and I want to commend the work that our technology team does in identifying all of these programs and maximizing the use of those grant dollars that are available for this. And again, we discussed it at FNO in our last meeting.
All right, thank you to the tech team. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Passes 4-0. Action Item 24, 240362, Consider Approval of Resolution for Bid Package T9 Technology Related to 2020 Bond Projects HS-Dash Two A, MS-Dash Two, and HS-Dash Four A. This is the final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package T9 Technology Related to 2020 Bond Projects HS2A, MS2, and HS4A. This is Action Item 240362, and is a final reading.
Second.
All right, any questions?
This is the technology related to all the, the bond projects that are currently underway at the middle schools and, and high schools, at both the, the new Nattatorium, as well as the, the new stadium that's coming in.
All right, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Passes 4-0.
Actually, I think this might be related to the CTE addition and the, and the new stadium, that the Nattatorium was included in the, a previous project.
Thank you. All right. Couple presentations, 2024, 2025 Budget Assumptions.
I'm sorry, just, did we vote on that? Because I know I interrupted there.
We did, I thought we did.
You said, yeah, yes, no, but, and then, so it came off as a yes, you did vote.
Okay, so we voted in this, I just want to make sure that we closed it out. Sorry for my clarification disrupting the flow.
You go to the official record, Diane, did we vote on? We did, okay.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. This evening, it's my pleasure to present to you the fiscal year budget assumptions, rather for next fiscal year. So with that, we always like to connect our work to the Plymouth Canton Community Schools' Dynamic Plan. So with that, our strategic goal A, Plymouth Canton Community Schools will increase achievement for all schools and close achievement gaps, and we intend to do that according to our strategic objective FO1 and 2, align financial resources to areas of greatest need of support for individual students as identified through academic achievement data. And also strategic goal E, Plymouth Canton Community Schools will be recognized as a leader and innovator for student learning and growth, and we'll achieve that through our strategic objective FO10, ensure district capability to anticipate and respond to strategic changes or opportunities in educational service and delivery systems through sound financial planning. So it is with this sound financial planning, as well as aligning those financial resources that we bring forward to you in the form of budget assumptions to inform our work as we approach the bus, the budget season for next fiscal year. So therefore, in order to achieve those dynamic plan strategic goals, we want the utilization, then, of our district resources through planned activities to produce data. And with that, then, that data will filter out through those outputs, such as our audited financial statements, it will come through in terms of other data results in our budget reporting, and we will use that data, then, to accomplish our short-term, midterm, and long-term goals. So this evening, we will spend our time together reviewing a tentative budget timeline. We will discuss some budget implications to our budget, as well as some initial budget assumptions, and review some historical financial data, including enrollment and foundation allowance. So the state budget process, the state budget process impacts local school district budgeting in many ways. First of all, the state holds a consensus revenue estimating conference. Some folks call it a CREC or a CREC, but it's easy to understand it if you read it backward, actually. It is a conference where they estimate revenues and they It is a conference where they estimate revenues and they reach consensus on those estimates. And the state holds those twice per year, in January and May. Occasionally, they hold a third consensus revenue estimating conference, most recently was just a couple of years ago in August, but those are very rare. The state treasurer, the House Fiscal, and the Senate Fiscal Agencies come together, they review financial projections, economists' forecasts, and they arrive at a consensus on those revenue forecasts for the current year and two additional years at the state level. So they are considering revenue projections around the state's general fund, general purpose, as well as the school aid fund. So on January 12th, the first CREC was hosted, where the school aid fund, and of course, the general fund and general purpose at the state level, those revenue forecasts showed slow, very slow, and only incremental, but steady growth, which is good news. The CREC is the basis, then, going forward for the executive budget proposal, or some folks call it the governor's proposal, as well as House and Senate budget proposals that we anticipate to see yet this spring. So as I mentioned, the executive budget proposal is influenced by the CREC in January. The governor released the executive budget on February 7th. And some of the key takeaways of that budget proposal, as it pertains to schools, is a recommendation for a 2.5% increase in foundation allowance that equates to about $241 per pupil as an increase to our current foundation allowance, which in Plymouth Canton is $9,608 per pupil. Also, a key takeaway from that budget proposal is a 2.5% increase for categoricals, which are categories of special types of restricted revenues. So we see those in the areas for special student populations, around special education, at-risk English language learners, Great Start Readiness Program, and career and tech education. We also saw a thread through a number of the proposals in this budget for continued funding at various levels, for mental health, school safety, free school meals, transportation cost support, early childhood programs, continued career and tech education, as well as other types of academic supports, educator hiring, and retention. As I mentioned, we anticipate, then, the House and Senate budget proposals to come this spring. Sometimes it's as late as the end of May, but more typically, August, early May. So turning to those budget assumptions, it is early in the process, yet we have some budget assumptions that we can, of course, launch and monitor. So with that, we want to monitor our enrollment projections. Our funding at a very primary level is based on enrollment, or full-time equivalent enrollment, multiplied by that foundation allowance. So that is our primary source of funding. So we want to monitor our current enrollment projections for next year, and even in years to the future. We want to maintain schools of choice expansion at 500 seats. With that, in terms of additional revenues, we will assume, for the time being, in lieu of having the House or Senate proposals, that we might anticipate an increase in foundation and categorical funding at that 2.5% increase, increase to level over the current year. We will assume that class sizes will remain consistent with this year and prior years. We anticipate a hard cap increase on healthcare of 4.1%. This year, it was only 1.3%, so that's a significant shift in our expenditures for next year. In terms of the Michigan School, a public employees retirement system, otherwise known as MIPSers, that is our retirement system on which all employees, this district must contribute to that program, and the base contribution rate currently is 31.34%. That's kind of a, an average rate, if you will, there's a number of rates, but we use that one in our financial planning. The fiscal year 25 rates are still forthcoming, so we don't know those quite yet. So turning just to some historical financial data, this chart represents our blended full-time equivalent student FTEs, and that's a mouthful. So blended means that we take our October count of the current year, we weight that at 90%, we take the spring count of the prior year, we weight that at 10%. So that blended count, then, is a weighted number for our full-time equivalent students. So we do have some students that attend part-time, or they might attend other types of programs that might have a different factor than a one, counting as one pupil. So I just wanted to walk you through that for those that are listening. But otherwise, this is just a chart to demonstrate that our enrollment, the number of pupils that we are funded upon, has decreased significantly after COVID, and I think that is representative of most public schools in our state, maybe even across the nation. But for this school year, we're currently funded on 16,205 FTEs. This graph represents the foundation allowance that we receive each year historically per pupil. So it is this dollar value times the FTE in the prior slide that gives us our primary source of funding. So in 2023, 2024, this current school year, as I mentioned, the amount we receive for each pupil, full-time pupil, is $9,608. There's a green bar going across that chart at an amount that represents $10,421, and that is the value that the Michigan, that the School of Finance Research Collaborative approximates to be the base cost to educate a pupil, $10,421. And that was three years ago. I'm not aware of a more recent publication of a number, yet even with that, we know that over inflation, that has certainly increased forward for today's dollars. But even with that, then, that just suggests that there is a funding gap per pupil of $813, and just for one year, that could amount to about $13 million. So that's a significant value. So what lies ahead? How do we go about developing our budget? Looking at our timeline, we had a conversation at the February 22 FNO Committee around budget assumptions and how we start to develop our budget for next school year. And then at the last FNO Committee on March 7th, we discussed the results of a community budget survey, and we will share more on that this evening as well. So March 12th, that's this evening, of course, we're presenting these budget assumptions and the budget survey results. And at the next, excuse me, on April 4th, at our next leaders' meeting, we will work through our budget transformation process. And this is an internal process that we use in order to transform our offerings, our programs, how we execute the expenditures, or maybe even our revenues within our district, and add or modulate or review where we place our resources, and what types of things we're going to support or may not support in the year ahead. So we involve all leaders, all voices are heard, and that way, we have shared leadership, we have shared ownership, and everyone is aware of the decisions and the why behind the decisions of how we deploy our resources. On May 9th, at the scheduled FNO Committee, then, we will review any outcomes from the May consensus revenue estimating conference. That has not yet been scheduled, so if we have that information in time, we will share the outcomes from that, as well as any House or Senate budget proposals, if those have been released at that time. And then, of course, we will review the 24, 25 budget additional assumptions, what do we know, what, where we, how is that budget coming together? And then at the board meeting following, on May 14th, we will present an initial presentation of that fiscal '25 budget. In June, at the FNO Committee, we will review the budget for a public hearing that will be held at the following board meeting on June 11. And then on June 20, we will present the final 24, 25 budget for discussion with approval at the June 25 meeting. By law, school districts in the state of Michigan must adopt a budget for the following school year by June 30. So we always work backward, frankly, from that time, we work backward from that deadline. So with that, it's a very brief, but fairly comprehensive overview of where we currently stand early in this process as we develop our budget for next fiscal year. So I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Yep. Just quickly, just want to, well, first, thank you for the presentation, and then, second, I just want to underscore that timeline that you went through, you know, once again, there's an opportunity for the community to weigh in, to be a part of the budgeting process as laid out by the timeline, and so I just want to echo that, there's plenty of opportunity for the community to come and sit and see what's going into the budget, why those items were selected to go in to the budget, so I just wanted to underscore that. And then, Patrick, did you have additional?
The other thing I'd mention is that although school districts have to have their budget done by June 30, the state doesn't do theirs until October 30?
Their fiscal year ends September 30.
Yeah, so their fiscal year ends of September 30. And unfortunately, for the last number of years, we have not had a state budget and any confirmation on what those results would be. So we're starting with assumptions, and we're using those CRECs to be able to provide us guidance and direction, but we always get a little bit surprised because the state passes their budget after we have to pass and approve ours. And that's where you see some of the things that we've done recently, where we've had to do budget amendments that happen mid-year as part of that process. So just, again, more context in this, in this work. So it's very much a moving target.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. That makes me remember that alongside this timeline, we will also be bringing forward a final budget amendment for this fiscal year, not reflected here because it is a separate topic yet. Thank you for your comments, because that work will ensue as well.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, Ms. Ay?
I have no questions, but thank you for the presentation.
I just have one question. Could you go to the first graph slide with the FTEs being shown?
Sure.
So at the bottom, it says, in the 2021, or 2020, 2021 school year, they used the super blend formula. Did they use that formula before as well?
That's an excellent question, and I was remiss in not mentioning that that was on the graphic. I should have addressed that, so thank you. So to answer your question, the super blend was a new, and one time only, I'm aware of, in the School Aid Act, and it was deployed in that fiscal year, 2020, 21. And what the super blend was, I'll define it first for you, was rather than the nine, I mentioned the 90% weight and the 10% weight, 90% current school year count, 10% prior spring count, as a way to blend and reach a final way to count the number of pupils. 2021 was the school year right after COVID started. So with that, during COVID in the state of Michigan, a number of public school districts lost enrollment, families chose to homeschool their children, they chose to enroll in schools that may have been open when others were closed, or what have you, for whatever reason. And so as a result of that, school districts, had the state maintained the 90-10 weight, school districts' funding would have plummeted. So the super blend was a way to average two years' worth of pupils to arrive at a moderated level of funding. It's a superficial count, but it was a way to be sure that districts weren't plunged into fiscal distress. So when we look at the 2021 bar, we see a darker green cap there. That represents the amount of supported number of FTEs. The true count was at the lighter green level. So I very much appreciate your comment. Thank you so much. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, and that makes the graph look like more down, instead of like one jump, I guess, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm, yes. So to that point, in 21, 22, there were a number of school districts that struggled because there was a bit of a dip there, a little bit of a fiscal cliff, if you will. So, thank you.
Monica, if I remember correctly, we're seeing a secular decline, just in terms of the number of students, like we have, what's our average number of students that are graduating versus the number of incoming kindergarteners?
So typically, we're graduating roughly 1,400 seniors in our kindergarten classes, between 11, 1,000 and 1,100.
Yeah, so it's about 300 students that are, the birth rates have gone down in our community as part of that process as compared to where we're at, and that's one of the reasons that we do that school of choice, is to capture students in, that live in our community, so they may be in Canton, but not part of the Plymouth Canton School District, or in surrounding districts, to be able to, be able to bring those people in to help support the class sizes and the work that we're doing.
And those school of choice are counted as an FTE, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, some, you sometimes have, just the notion of FTE, it's a full-time equivalent, there might be some situations where a student is only going to PCCS part-time because they're getting services in some other way, and so we actually roll those part-time people up into a full-time equivalent.
Thank you.
Great. Member McCoy?
I don't have any questions, thank you. I did want to point out, though, that 10,421 they talked about, that's a general education student. That's not a student receiving special services, taking the bus, and CTE. So it'd be much higher for children receiving other services. And also, it was kind of small on there, but they are talking about continuing with the breakfast and lunch this year, but that is not, at this point, an every-year thing. But they are talking about continuing it, they would like to continue it, but that is, that's not a for-sure guaranteed going into the future.
That's correct. In fact, everything in the governor's proposal is not a guaranteed thing. That will go through the budget process at the state, yeah. Thank you for pointing that out.
Vice President Christian?
No questions, thank you very much.
All right, we're good on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second presentation. Is there a second presentation? Let's see, there is. It's the Budget Community Forum Presentation.
And this is a little bit unusual for us from a presentation perspective, because it's done generally by the board, oh, thank you. We're generally doing this by the board to provide feedback to the board as part of the budgeting process. So we, some great work that happens within Ms. Minnick and Ms. Yori's work to be able to take all those community responses, and then to aggregate and roll those things up, and then we bring them forward to the board to discuss. So rather than waiting until the end of each presentation, we'll have a pause after each section to discuss each of those items, because otherwise, you're going to have 37 items that you're trying to come back to. So we'll move forward with this process. So the work that we do here is to provide suggestions and feedback from district stakeholders. This includes students, families, community members, school personnel, and the Board of Education, that we use this as a structured way to gather input from people throughout the community on what are important things that people should, they want to have considered as part of the budget process. And we use this to identify areas that there might be cost savings, or revenue enhancements, or program changes, as well as long-term opportunities that come in the process. We send out the survey, and we provide, I believe it's about two or three weeks, to get input back on this process. We aggregate those results, and then we categorize these things into these different processes. For this year, we've received 46 responses, and the categories that we've identified are athletics and activities, diversity, equity, inclusion, human resources, teaching and learning, both curriculum and instruction, and custodial and maintenance. And what you'll see as we go through this process is, we'll see each of these, these areas here, and there's a number after them. That number is not the number of responses, but it's actually the ordinal number, or the index number of the specific response. So if we need to get additional details on those things, we can then see them as part of the process. We use, as a board, a chance to discuss these things in public with the community, and to share the results that we get coming back, but then, the administration also uses this data and these processes to go into their transformations, as they're considering the budget adjustments that they may want to do in that process. So we'll start this work with athletics and activities, and we continue to see some feedback from the community, specifically on the Canton mascot and logo, and suggestions that we don't change those as part of that process. We have definitely some conversations that we've heard before around funding for the non-funded sports, such as palm, cheer, et cetera. And in that particular case, we've got some work that we're going to do in the FNO Committee to have a analysis of the costs and revenue, and the funding sources that are available across all athletics and activities, with an eye towards understanding how those programs are done, and that funding is part of that process. It will not affect this budget year, but this will affect subsequent, or has the potential to affect subsequent budget years. It's really a data gathering exercise, and this will take some time to gather that information as part of that process. And then, of course, we also have the counter one, is reducing the expenditures on athletics. We see, oftentimes with any of these items, we see four items and counter items that show up here. With respect to facilities, we show up here. With respect to facilities, we saw a number of feedback on that process, specifically at the high school level, asking to fix the fields, the gyms, the weight room, the pools, and the grounds. All of these were from a perspective of athletics and activities. In that process, we called out a separate line item here for repairing and upgrading the Canton swimming pool, bleachers, scoreboard, and locker rooms, because it was very specific to that location. And then lastly, to redo the PSEP tennis courts. As we saw this evening, we're already moving forward with the PSEP tennis courts. With the other work that we're doing at the high school, they're part of the overall bond program. So across the next two to three years, we're going to be evaluating the, and doing projects at the high school that will affect many of those areas in this process. And right now, the administration is working with the stakeholders at the high schools to be able to understand the priorities and the focus and the work that they want to do there, to make sure that they're ranking those things from a priority perspective. We have a lot of investments, multimillion dollars that are invested that are coming from the bond program, but those things are not, we still have to rank the initiatives and the projects as part of that process. So I'll pause here after talking about athletics and activities and see if there's any questions. And of course, for the administration to weigh in if I've not provided the right context on these items or additional context is merited.
Does anyone have any questions?
So you were talking about in FNO, looking at, because we'd started at one point, we kind of asked about the funding for athletics and activities, and a lot of questions about how we decided what is funded. Is there a timeline on that work? It looks massive, considering the amount of activities and athletics that are involved?
It is. We're hoping to do this work across this calendar year as part of that process so that we could have that information available to potentially affect next budget cycle. The big question for us is how do we structure the data gathering process? And the big thing that we're trying to do there is we want to make sure that we're involving the right stakeholders there, because when we've done this work before, we got differing results from different teams and different processes. And we also don't want to send people off on wild goose chases. We want them to say, what is the information that you think would be necessary for us to have that detail as part of the process, and what data can be received? Because when we look at athletics and activities programs, it's not just the money that the district spends, but it's the money that is spent by the booster clubs, by the grant programs, by the other things that are part of that process, by the families that go into that, that impact the costs and the revenue that come into those programs. And we want to do this more as a collaborative process. So we're building the structure and the outline for that, and we hope to get that started in the next few months to get that work done. And we also want to involve community members, people that have expressed specific interest in this process and to be part of that work. We will do that through the FNO Committee, but we'll reach out to those people that have expressed that interest and that have given us feedback about those programs, so that we can try to include them in that process.
Still, a related question. I assume that most of this was discussing activities, athletics at the park.
This was specifically, these survey responses were facilities and athletics at the park. So that's where these particular ones. We do see some other feedback that comes further about improvements across the district, but this, these ones were specifically at the PSEP environment.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Josh and Said.
Do you have a question?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Neither do I. Thank you. Okay. So the next area that we'll go to is diversity, equity, and inclusion. We saw one response here promoting the, promoting the support of groups for LGBT as well as female students to develop confidence in anti-bullying and help with the development of leadership skills. Along the same lines, we also saw people saying we should eliminate the DEI program and initiative. These were people that generally had, that took, that didn't believe in the program and the value as part of that process. If we were to look at the next response, it was more related to cost savings. So removing the DEI positions from the district and eliminate the two DEI officers and remove all the DEI positions, that was done as from a perspective of cost savings. So there's really three categories of things that we have here. People that are in support of this with a single response, about eight people that said to get rid of the programs as a whole, and then three people that said to get rid of the programs as a cost savings in that process. Now...
I would just say, just for clarity, around the work that we do with DEI that is grounded in our dynamic plan, that really serves as the compass or the roadmap for a district, it's not programs, it's not initiatives. It is how we do our business through that lens of diversity, equity, inclusion, and a commitment to ensuring, as you heard earlier through elementary presentation, that every student in Plymouth Canton has a sense of belonging, that as represented in our dynamic plan, feel safe, welcomed, valued within our school community. So looking at how, again, we do business through our curriculum, our instructions, it's not a separate program. It is our program, ensuring that each of our students have what they need to be successful in the district.
So along those lines, do we have any indication, if, for example, to eliminate DEI programs initiatives, for instance, were they talking about getting rid of the IEP programs or handicap accessibility, or do we have any idea exactly what they were targeting?
They're specifically targeting DEI. They called them out by name in the process.
Specifically, in terms of any positions, that would be the third bullet. We currently have three positions within our district, a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and we have two Culture and Climate Specialists. And those are actually 11 T-funded positions, and those will expire at the end of June 30th, 2025, as we know that those were, 2024, at the end of this school year. But the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion lives or reports both in HR and teaching and learning. And again, that continues to support that, the work that we do through our dynamic plan, and every single department from our staff, our curriculum instruction, materials, assessment, professional development, the lens in which we do our work. Again, it is not a program. It is how we do business for each and every child in this district to be seen, to have a sense of belonging, and to align our resources to support the needs of each of our students, without exception.
If I may add to that, equity and inclusion grounded in social justice and anti-racism is a strategic theme.
Right.
So it is obviously a thread through all of our programming and all of the work that we do. Thank you.
That's what I was going to say. This is that the dynamic plan is something that we've worked on collaboratively between the board and the administration.
And the community.
And the community.
And the community in that process. And that's very much a tenet of what we do. So I, this is obviously feedback that's coming from a relatively small number of people, but it's input for us to think about this. And as Dr. Merritt mentioned, we will have to consider some of those positions that were 11 T-funded. We'll have to evaluate whether those are positions that we would continue to fund outside of those grant programs, or whether there are things that we would do differently. So I think that's one of the things that the administration is actually coming back with the data on, to say how those programs have made a difference as they're going through the transformation process.
I think through that, to just add to that, the idea even around our 11 T positions is to create systems and structures within the building so that that work continues. It's not another, it's not a department that does this work. It is how we all do our work. And so, over these last few years, creating teams within our department with existing staff to really make sure that we have those objectives, guidelines, structures, parameters, resources, to help ensure that every child has what they need to succeed.
All right, other questions?
No, I just, not really related to this topic, but you kind of hit on it, that, you know, this is a small group of responses. And I know that we go through this presentation every year, and every year we see some common themes or new themes, and it's always great to include the community in this conversation around budget. My wondering is, you know, if we look to the first slide, we received 46 responses, and we have a much greater community than that. I know last year it was around the same number of responses, too.
About, almost 80, I think, last year.
Okay. So just as a general wondering, I would love to see, how can we engage our community to be a part of this process, to really understand what's important to you, what's important to us, and how we can align our resources with everyone else, too?
Yep, it's a good point. We try to promote this program and this process.
Absolutely.
The emails go out to the whole, the whole community. But these, some of these same themes show up in the climate and culture survey work that we do. So we get some of that data points as part of that process as well, beyond just the suggestion box that occurs as part of this process.
Well, I will say, I was definitely disappointed that the covered walkway didn't make the cut this year.
So oftentimes, for those that are in the audience here, we oftentimes get either a tram or a covered walkway at the high school coming up. We've seen monorail in the past. Heated sidewalks. I mean, all things that would be awesome to have. I think the concern is just the economics and the other work that we need to do at the schools to repair our facilities and upgrade them.
Yep, absolutely.
Patty, did you?
No. I'm good.
Josh and Said, anything?
Just, we should dig a tunnel between all of this.
Exactly.
And that would be free.
We missed your response, Josh, in the survey. Okay, so the next section that we have here is on human resources. This is human resources in general that we see. We might have some other areas that have got other human resource components. This is specifically on investing in the staff. This is the teachers and the paraproses that we have throughout the district to increase the pay and improve the benefits that are offered, to make sure that we're both keeping as well as recruiting the best and the brightest in the work that we do. And I think that's very much foundational in terms of the things that we do. You, if we look at the numbers that we have of that $241 that we're going to get, that doesn't even cover the costs that we would have to do in our contracts to deliver steps and increases as part of that. So we can, this is near and dear to our heart, but this doesn't change unless the funding model changes at the state level to give us more funding in this process. So as much as we'd like to make those investments, they're hard. There's also a question around the administrative staff, reducing those staff, even those paid with grant funds, that the district is too top-heavy. As we mentioned earlier, those grant-funded positions will be reevaluated as part of the transformation process. And when we compare our metrics for our administrative staff against districts of similar size, we're below them in terms of the number of administrators that are in the district on a per pupil basis. This next one is similar, but it was very much specifically called out for not general administrative staff, but board positions in newly created departments in that, and then stop hiring and remove non-teaching positions with excessive salaries. I mean, so these three that are there are very similar in nature, but they were targeting different audiences, so we called them out separately.
Any questions? I don't believe so.
Okay. The next section here is in the same vein, some of the same things that we saw from the athletics and activities, but this was more broad and general in the process for maintenance and custodial, and specifically around the facilities. There was a great suggestion from, I believe, a student to remove the hallway lockers and to sell them. For any, if the students are listening here, if anybody is interested in buying used hallway lockers, please let us know. In fact, hallway lockers are one of the areas that, as we've done the conversations at the high school level, we're not making those investments in them because of the administration and the teams and all the stakeholders said, this is not where we should be spending our time and money, and that's allowed us to repurpose that money into other areas. So we will not be investing in new hallway lockers. And I don't think that actually removing them would give us the space savings that this suggestion wanted, because they're built on a, they're built into the walls. So there's not an easy opportunity to make the hallways wider in that process. But again, if somebody wants to make us an offer for those, we welcome that. Revamp and beautify the landscape and the campus at PSEP. This is an area that is definitely something that we've considered in the process, and we'll go into that prioritization. We do that landscaping work as we do any of the additions. So like when we did the work as related to the scene shop, or to the natatorium, or the things that are happening in the CTE wing, or the other improvements throughout the campus, those areas get redone, but they're not necessarily targeted as part of a broad landscaping and redo process. This will absolutely be considered in the prioritization process, but unfortunately, it's oftentimes one of the things that's lower in that list for us from a priority perspective. We've seen updating facilities throughout the district, as well as the bathrooms in particular, at the high school. This is one of those things that we've seen come up again and again, and it's absolutely one of the items that's part of the overall high school refresh work that we're doing. And we're also looking to see if there's things that we can do in the meantime to address them. So for example, we've seen feedback that's come in through these meetings where we have some broken toilet fixtures in some of the bathrooms. And so there's been work that's done to better communicate the situation there. In most cases, those things are, because we're waiting for parts. We've got supply chain issues for those products, and so they're putting signage on those things to let people know that those things are on back order, so somebody doesn't see a covered urinal and say that this is just being ignored. It's not being ignored. It's just we're waiting for the parts associated with that process. But we are looking to say, it's absolutely one of the focus areas that we've done, and you've seen that across all the other bond projects that we've done where bathrooms are one of the key focus areas.
Any questions? I think you're good.
The other thing I've mentioned on these ones is, most of these items are related to bond projects. So although they come up in the budget survey, they're not related to the kinds of fixed, or these are things, the capital improvement projects that we would do as part of the bond, and not necessarily things that we would do out of the general fund and the budget process. Certainly, some of the maintenance work would occur there, but the renovation work that would happen as part of the process is more bond activities. Josh and Said?
I have no questions.
Neither do I.
The last set of our questions is in teaching and learning. And we saw suggestions that came up, and we see this one often, is expanding foreign language structure at the elementary school. We see this, there's only one response this particular year, but this is a common theme that has come up again and again. Adding teaching of agriculture and Future Farmers of America program at the high school. I mean, this is something that the district, I think, did back in the 70s, when we were more of an agricultural community, but there was a request and an interest in being able to expand that process. One thing I, Beth, there is a process that we have for adding new curriculum. What do we do for that, for whether it's the foreign language or the...
Yep. The process is generally that we look, we do an environmental scan for interest. So those often come up through, this would be a high school course. So those would come up through PSEP specifically, in this case, most likely. And they have an instructional team that folks bring those to, and then they do a review of, is there interest from the students to bring this forth as a curriculum proposal? Then we build out the pilot of it, get information from students to see, is this a feasible thing that we will bring forward? And then we start to create the process so that people aren't doing a lot of due diligence to find out that it isn't a viable program because there's not enough interest in it, or that it is. So there's a process sitting at PSEP. So if there is a student that's interested in that, they could also talk to their assistant principal or the principal, a teacher, and folks can bring it forth as well.
And for individual students that may be interested in something like this, there's also opportunities for like independent study and things like that, correct?
Yep. And then we, what we also do is we look at, is there a program in the area as well? We've done some very unique things where we've partnered with other districts to allow for JROTC, Junior ROTC programs, Reserve Officers Training Core programs. So we try to look at across the county as well, is there a program that we can work collaboratively with, that we can do an independent study within PSEP, or additionally, we work often with parents, too, to see is there a way to get the student to another program as well.
So the next one here is around the inclusive classrooms and promoting the inclusive classrooms by ending the tag program. We oftentimes see this come up. The tag program is certainly something that's been a hot button for the community for a long time. It, one of the things that I've seen that the district has done is provide more differentiation at the home schools, which helps to support those students that maybe don't want to go to a magnet program. But that magnet program has been very successful for us as a district and has oftentimes been a big attractor for us in having people stay with the district instead of going to a charter or a different option in our community. So we are very much supportive of the tag program and that process. The last one here in this section is on expanding the... The last one here in this section is on expanding the early childhood programs. This is our kids, kids time?
Yeah, early childhood is a preschool, not a kid.
A preschool, I'm sorry. Early childhood program from four days a week to five days a week. And this is one where it's really one of those demand conversations. You know, we, we, from a staffing perspective, this is not, it's a program that, that breaks even, and we see this as an opportunity, as a feeder program to add to the, the students into our district for early childhood. But this is one that isn't like a moneymaker for us. It's, we, we set our costs to be, to be affordable to the, to the community and to be able to encourage people to do that, but it doesn't, it doesn't make, it, it doesn't have the, the capacity at the current rates to be able to expand the program to five days because it would require additional staffing to do that. And then the next section that we have is on the hu- human resources, and we saw a number of different feedback on teachers on special assignments. We saw a lot of advocacy for keeping teachers on special assignments at the elementary level, advocacy on keeping teachers through the entire program, through grades four through 12, which is where those programs work. And then, of course, the counter one, we're saying, we should get rid of TOSSAs and get rid of the, the media specialists. And then lastly, we saw feedback on eliminating the instructional coaches as they're not helping the classroom teachers. So Monica or Ms. Rail, if perhaps you guys can provide some feedback on the TOSA program and the instructional coaches and the, and the changes that we've done as part of that process?
Yep. The teacher on a special assignment program is currently funded under 11T, so that they are working with the, with students identified from the seven demographic groups. At the elementary level, they push into small group instruction in classrooms. At the middle school level, they do a combination of push-in and also some caseload support. And at the high school level, there's three at the high school that do caseload support for some of our most at-risk students. And then we also have leveraged a different grant for Starkweather to have one TOSA at Starkweather as well. Throughout the course of this year, we've been doing, last year and this year, we're doing a deep dive into the data around the TOSSAs. Hanover Research, who is our work, research partner, we always have research, what are called Qs with them, and they're doing qualitative and quantitative research. Qualitative being feedback. So we've launched a survey for folks whose students work primarily directly with TOSSAs and then for staff who work with the TOSSAs in the elementaries. And we're combining that with looking at the trajectory and the change in student performance, and so we'll be bringing that information forward as well. That will help make some of our decisions, understanding that we don't have longitudinal data because there's only been two years of this program. But as we look at what is the difference that it's making, we, we have to make some decisions about this program because 11T expires September 2024, but at the end of the school year, you know, in, in reality, because at the end of the year, we would be looking at staffing. So instructional coaches, that was a, a shift in the literacy program because we showed, we talked about the data that was showing that the additional support after solid classroom instruction wasn't moving the needle for our students. So the purpose of instructional coaches is just like thinking about a, an athletic coach or some other type of coach, a voice coach. It's to make people better at what they do well already. So instructional coaches work side-by-side with teachers to help support instructional strategies with what's known as tier one, so for all students. They've been instrumental this year in the rollout of UFLY, which is the University of Florida Literacy Initiative, and supporting our early literacy programming for our students. So working side-by-side with teachers, helping kind of reflect and revise, looking at data together to make informed decisions around what happens in classrooms, so.
And do we have data on those instructional coaches? Are, you know, when comparing instructional courses, excuse me, when we compare the instructional coaches against the previous methods that we use, are we seeing the, the movement that we're looking for?
Yep. And you'll remember back in time, Dr. Brady shared that data last year at the end of the year as we made those shifts in the last couple of years. And then we, we will do this data dive again at the end of this year as we look at the coaching model.
Okay. And that'll influence you as part of the transformation process and the budget and the work that you're already doing.
That's correct. Thank you.
All right, any questions? I think we're good.
Josh?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that was the extent of the, the process, you know, we brought it in discussion as we went through rather than giving a list of 20 items or 30 items that we do as part of that, that work. So this is the feedback, you know, we still welcome community feedback through the process. This was the formal mechanism that we used to gather that, that feedback.
Fantastic. Thank you, Member Kehoe. Onto citizens' comments. First up is Jennifer Boss. And a reminder, three minutes. Carly will start the timer.
This weekend, I had the privilege of accompanying the culinary and management teams to the state championships in Kalamazoo. Our teams came in first and second in the state. The management team will go on to compete in the national competition in Baltimore. Was not mentioned here this evening, and I'm not surprised since there were no principals, no board members, no athletic or activities directors, no members of the executive team in attendance for their competition or award ceremony. The team did all their amazing accomplishments with little funds and an oven whose door had to be held shut with a stick. Money is consistently not allocated properly at Plymouth Canton Community Schools. I'd want to make a comment on Kelsey Bowles leaving the district. She is one of the main reasons that one of my sons succeeds in math to this day and that he graduated from high school. She came to his signing day when he committed to Kent State to wrestle and brought her poor little sick boy with her so she could be there. That's sacrifice. I happened to overhear a group of teachers discussing professional development at a res, at a restaurant one evening. I stopped and spoke with them, and every single one of them said, I don't know how much longer I can do this. Our district is full of amazing teachers, but they are not getting the support that they need and deserve. You asked how to engage the community to take the survey? No one's going to take the survey if they're not listened to. People feel like they aren't heard or cared about. Changes need to be made for kids and for teachers and for PCCS.
All right, Christopher Boss.
You've seen the movie Shawshank Redemption. Andy Dufresne wrote the mayor every month to get more books for the prisoners. So I think if I come here, every board meeting, eventually something might be happening. I visited South Lion East on Saturday to watch my daughter swim, and I wouldn't say that it would eat off the floor, but the place was immaculate. It was in pristine condition, it was clean, and then we come back into our facilities and it's, our buildings are still filthy dirty, and I don't know what it will take to get something to be done about it. I know we talk about all these budgets and all this money we're spending on all these new facilities, but we're not taking care of what we have. I mean, seriously, if you as a board and Superintendent Merritt, if you just walked through the schools, if you just had to walk through with your cameras, you would see what I'm talking about. They're filthy dirty. And what message does that give to our students? If we're not going to show that we're going to care for the facilities they're going to go to school in? And I did research online, there's tons of studies that I don't have time to go into, but it talks about the psychological things that it does to students when they work in an environment that's like that versus an environment that is clean. And so when you walk into some of these other schools, South Lion, Celine, and all these schools, they are being cared for and they're being cleaned. The bathroom, it wasn't a parts issue. That thing was broken for six months. Before, I haven't brought it up, two minutes, two months went by. It was broken, my son said, four months prior to when I brought it up to the attention of the board. There's toilets that you can buy at multiple stores. You can buy a toilet anywhere. If we're letting a toilet go broken for six months when there's limited toilets as it is right there, whoever's giving you that, it's an excuse. And so I know that the cleaning of the facilities is contracted, and I know it's not like when I grew up, when, like when I grew up, the janitor for the building took pride in the building. I mean, he, if, if a wrapper dropped, he picked it up. So I know that there's an issue there, but someone has to be responsible for holding the people that are cleaning our buildings because they're not. They're filthy. And if you just walked through, you would see what I mean. It's, it's gross. There was vomit on the floor somewhere, and eventually that got cleaned up. But seriously, I encourage the board, I encourage the executive team, superintendent, everyone, just walk through the buildings and open up your eyes and look, and you're going to see, you're going to be shocked at how dirty these are. And my kids come home and they tell me all the time, they can't believe the conditions these buildings are in. And I grew up here, I mean, this is Plymouth Canton Community Schools was the cat's meow. I mean, you took pride in saying you went to these schools. And you go to Brighton and you go to all these other schools, you walk through and you're like, this is absolutely incredible. I mean, the floors shine. There's not gross stuff in the corners, there's not trash, there's not holes in the wall, there isn't paint that's falling off, there isn't holes in the ceiling. Please, take a tour as a group and go see what I'm talking about. It's bad.
All right, follow-up board questions from 22724.
I believe that this was addressed over two board notes. This is around the middle school furniture purchase. Member Kehoe wanted to know the age of the classroom furniture and rooms, which are scheduled to be updated with the bond purchase. So we had STEM in both east, west. We gave the initial condition, I think, first, and then the 2014 bond is when they were addressed.
Correct. And we wanted to make sure that those things were, when we were doing the other work at the, the middle schools, that all the rooms were done and that the, those other rooms didn't need it, so, because they were relatively new.
All right, that's it. Were there any, I don't believe there was any follow-up questions from tonight?
I don't think so, either.
All right. With that being said, we will adjourn at 9:12 PM.